We'll call the panel select board meeting to order on Thursday, August fourteenth at seven P M. For the agenda approval, approval of the minutes of seven thirty-one fourteen. Warrants, mail, transfer supervisor monthly board meeting. Old business, we're gonna have our emergency coordinator talk about updated basic emergency operation plan for panel. That we're gonna do with the Comcast's installation agreement and proposals that are there. And then the grant list extensions, that's under the old business. On the new business, we're gonna talk about other board meetings being broadcast on TV, CAT TV. And the rescue squad is here to discuss something with us as well.
Make a motion to accept the agenda.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, unanimous. Pro with the minutes at seven thirty-one fourteen.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Warrants. Cons payable ending eight fourteen, eight fifteen fourteen. Nine thousand forty-six dollars and sixty-four cents. Payroll ending eight fifteen fourteen in the amount of four thousand eight hundred twenty-four dollars and seventy-nine cents. Ending eight eight fourteen's account payable in the amount of ten thousand six hundred thirty-two dollars and sixty-five cents. Payroll ending eight eight fourteen in the amount of nine thousand seven hundred four dollars and twenty-one cents. I'd like a motion to approve the first three I read off.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 This one, report ending eight eight fourteen for payroll, take a motion to accept that that we read off.
So moved. Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
I abstain from that. Okay, now. Okay, we have a public records brochure for training. That's being held on open meeting laws. And it will be held at the Capitol Plaza in Montpelier, for those that wish to go. We have the town fair, which is held Thursday, October ninth, at Essex Junction. People need to look through this, I'm gonna plan to attend this. Main reason is I wanna go to this model solar contract for municipalities because we've had people talking about wanting us to come in an agreement with them providing electricity for us through a solar agreement. I'd like to see what other towns are doing, so I'll be attending that. But look through it because if there's something you guys wish to go to. Vermont leagues of cities and towns news. What they're going on. Zone administrator log, he had no applications or verification of last month. The only thing we had was firework complaints, ATV complaints, some sign complaints, and a general check on people calling about various structures and stuff they wanted to build. And then we have a letter from a citizen on Bee Hill, who is talking about the maintenance of his area when they do snow plowing, he's looking for people not to plow piles of snow in front of his driveway and some other things, I would say Casey needs to read this and then we'll hear from him. Board in agreement with that? Okay, it's a mail. I'm gonna sort of go out of thing here and Mike, you wanna come up and give us your report? If you guys don't mind, some of these will be quicker than the transfer station.
That is, that's every year by May it's supposed to be in, this year it's late. There's issues with it, I'm in contact. Right along with Allison, made her up on it. And it's handwritten, 'cause that's part of the problem with it. But she said that was fine. You have to sign it or not sign it, but you gotta put your name in. Here, no. Beginning October first. Chairman, select board chairman, or the town manager, obviously we have a chairman. They have to have the I C S one oh one class.
Okay.
If you sign it now and you don't have it, you have to October first to get it done.
Was that the class they gave us over the first, so I did attend that?
You already have that, so you're good to go. Now you gotta do is figure out what date it was.
Yeah.
So, what is this now, this is a?
That's emergency, local emergency management thing. A lot of pages are blank because they're blank until something happens. Once that happens, I have to fill in everything, then it goes back to state again. This here has main file here, copy has to go upstate. The school gets a copy, the rescue squad gets a copy, and all the fire departments get a copy.
Okay. I'll let you look at this, then bring it back and we'll get a motion to sign.
Stuff like that. A lot of the stuff in there came from a template they had. And from the old one. A lot of things have changed, they change the names just about every year.
Yeah, we had a guy come down, it's actually hanging up over there, you see, it's B E O P, Basic Emergency Operation Plan. Now it's L E O P, Local Emergency Operation Plan. Who knows what it'll be next year? Of course, each year they change things, so. Yeah, it'll be regional next time.
I'm gonna look at that.
Yeah, Linda will probably have on file when I went to that class, 'cause I think all the selectmen or the majority of them attended that.
I think it was in November. September, November, two years ago, I think, maybe three years ago.
I don't remember, I remember it was at the firehouse and we all went.
Oh, you still got your certificate, I don't know if you got yours or not.
Don't know, don't remember, don't ever remember getting something sent to me.
We did one right here, it took a long time, but. Also the, the radio and the pager I have. I mean, ordering batteries for it, batteries are, once I take them out, the chargers are dead.
Just get new ones.
Another thing to keep in mind, I'm trying to get Katie built up because that radio's the new thing.
Is there any money in the, did they put anything in your line?
Yeah, it's a, uh, six hundred dollars.
Okay.
I put three hundred in each year. Trying.
Now what, what radio is that, Mike?
Just a portable radio, where I can talk to the fire department, the rescue squad, state police, anything event emergency, I can talk to them. It's a portable radio. I think they got it from fire department a while ago.
Not sure, could be.
It's normal in general and it's, it's getting up there and it's getting updated.
But it, but it is on the same frequencies and stuff?
Yes.
I think most of people wouldn't have.
Are they?
Well, if they do, then we'll have to switch, that's all.
I guess that is getting.
That also impacts our road crew, I think they also have.
Other than that, that's about it, I mean. Investigating a couple of things this year already. Monitor a couple of things when it's ever gonna get heavy rain. Then Allison's been in contact with me a couple of times and different things. She's been really helpful getting this done. Once I get things straightened out, it'll be all computer printed.
Right.
Never. After it.
Yeah, you have to ask Linda when I took that course, maybe she knows, or maybe you know who to contact that taught that course. So we can get a list of everybody.
There's seven, seven parts to it. I don't think it was the one hundred that we had at the firehouse.
No, one hundred's basically, it was one oh one, I C S one oh, one hundred, one oh one.
We had to go through.
Whatever that was, I think it's I C S one oh one, right? And that was the whole thing, that was.
Yeah, we were there a while.
You could also do it online too.
Yeah, if you can do that one online, that's the only way you can.
Thinking the one the firehouse wasn't, that's not with that one.
But you can either have the I C S one oh one or.
Have the, whether it's.
Yep, sure.
The only one that can sign that is the chairman.
Yeah, I'll sign it, I'll have you. I didn't have the course, I'll find a way to do it.
So you're, he's gotta do the I C S.
By October first.
And what was it, was it one oh one you said, or one hundred?
Uh, it says on there, I can't remember what it is.
I need to find out which one I took and then go from there.
Well, it's definitely the one they're asking for, 'cause I already, I got clarifications on it. I was confused with writing, that it was me that needed it, or you, and clarified it that it was the chairman with the board that needed it.
Yeah. I thought, I think that's why we went that time, because it was.
Yeah, that and.
Select board and other people had to take it.
Yeah, 'cause of this thing here was coming down and.
We all went.
That was part of a communication strand. I C S one hundred.
One hundred. You know, that's four something, ain't it?
Four oh two, yeah. I can only read it as a seven, but.
Honestly, you don't necessarily have to sign it, because like with your name there, you're certifying, you're the manager.
Okay, uh. Motion for me to sign this?
Make a motion to sign.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
I abstain, seeing as I'm the one signing it.
You can leave that for Linda.
Linda, right?
And have her make copies and she usually sends it out and I'll stop by in a couple of days, whenever she gets back.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hang up, Mike.
Okay. I'm gonna jump around a little bit, just to confuse their clip tonight. One of the other discussions on here for the new business was other boards' meetings being broadcast by CAT TV. I know this board has been broadcast now for many years. What's your thoughts on other boards having theirs also broadcast? I know we've got things like town plan that's being discussed and other things. It might be a good way to publicly get this out there, what's your thoughts?
I, I think that's a great idea, for the simple reason that you just stated, because, especially in the wintertime. Older people can't get around or whatever, the roads. Let's know what's going on in the town. I mean, besides what we do here. You know, I'm sure with discussions of the new building, et cetera, I'm sure a lot of townspeople would like to know what's going on with that and.
Yeah, that, that would be another group. I was thinking of the planning mainly because of the, all the new town plans and stuff, but you're right, there's other boards that might also fit into this. Henry, you got a thought?
Well, I think, I think both those boards, I think, um, I think, uh, because we got two planners, we've got.
Development review board, the planning board, there's a lot of boards.
There's a lot of boards, and DRB board, and so on, but you know, I, I think they, monthly meetings, am I correct on them? Okay, so I mean, it isn't that they're every week and so on, but with, with the things that are coming up at this time, geez, I think it's a, a plus. And everyone would know in town, that way, um, what is being discussed on those boards, other people will hear the, if they, if they dislike or like. Because I mean, we're always trying to send out, um, feelers out there to find out what people's ideas are and so on, and that way, um, more people would know what's going on, and I think it's a great thing to do, I, or.
Sure.
I mean, I mean, there's just as many important things on these other boards going on as goes on on this board, I understand that this board here discusses deeper into the money and taxpayers' dollars and that sort of thing, but, but that, it's all boiled around other boards. All of our work is, 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 is all around other boards and their work. So, no, I think, Nelson, I think that's a good idea.
I agree.
Ronnie, you have anything to say on that?
Well, definitely the planning board should be put on because they're always asking how the people feel. So maybe they'd get more input. You see people side out and we see how they feel, what direction they wanna go. That's all I gotta say on it.
Anybody in the audience, some of you people have served on boards, some serve on boards, what's your take, what's your take on more boards being aired?
I, I, my, one question I would have is, is there a fee for this? No, I'm not sure.
I say we haven't yet, there is, I think we can handle usually fifty bucks or something, so it says, and not for the amount of people that need to there, I'm more, I guess my concern would be is how the board, you know, this board accepted that, and we've been there for a long time. What's your take on the other boards?
Planning would be appropriate.
Yeah, what do you think about, what do you think about the DRB, you're on a DRB, do you think that's an appropriate board?
Our, our business meetings some nights are, are ten minutes at most.
Yeah, I'm thinking more of the hearings, the DRB hearing process. Not the meetings where you're planning what you're gonna do next.
I wouldn't put them live, I, I don't think they, there's no public input other than abutters, so there really wouldn't be a, a reason for the general public, and the, and the abutters are all notified prior to, so they're there. I think the town office committee would be a very good decision or a board to, especially if you're trying to do it now.
Oh, definitely.
You know, it answers a lot of questions for people.
I saw that other guy sneak back there into a chair, you serve on the planning board, what's your take on that being, I don't know how many years you put on there?
I feel.
Yeah, I know.
I think it's, like I said, I'll see who'll agree that the communication between the boards and the public, so I think it would be great, the more the public's informed, the better off we are.
I think that's a consensus.
Yeah, so how, how would the board? I'd like to go about this.
I think we should have the administrator contact CAT TV. Find out if it's agreeable with them, what they say about it, and report back to us and we'll go from there.
Okay, yeah, because Julie can tell them what the schedule is, because she pretty much knows the schedule of both boards.
Yeah.
And, and then at that point, CAT TV can tell us whether they can do them or not based on the schedule.
And manpower. That's important.
Okay, so let's, we'll have our administrator talk with Julie and then get in touch with.
CAT TV.
CAT TV, yep. Okay, sounds good. Yeah, I tend to agree that with all the stuff, especially right now with new town plans and stuff.
Yep.
Okay.
No, I think that's great.
Okay. Uh, well, let's take the transfer supervisor monthly board meeting, get them up here, now that I grilled them on the other.
Steal riches.
Okay, steal my thunder.
Okay, I think everybody knows by now that we were successful on getting them back home for the transfer station. Relatively low hours, pretty good machine.
And a low price.
Yeah, a better price, um, we're gonna do a little work on it, so it looks better, some pound of pride, I guess you would call it.
We saw it, you know, on the other night, or matter of fact, a couple of nights. Yeah, and, and it was a very good, uh, I think you've done very well picking, I, I do, I think that in good shape, the pins all were tight, I mean, I looked it over.
Yep.
I mean, and what I saw anyway, I mean, I don't know how good it runs or any of the other things, but all I'm saying is, there's no question those low hours certainly show. Okay, so that's.
Another thing that I don't know if you guys are aware of this or not, but not every town would do that, I mean, based on, I think, experience on this board and comfort level that's been established, that, that there's a lot of towns that wouldn't touch anything like this, I think it'll pay off for the town.
Oh, yeah, oh, I, I think so.
So, the other thing about it is, I did wanna try and get an offset boom like that was on the CAT before, but we took, when we got this, I brought it over Wednesday, and it is more user friendly in that building than the John Deere, for whatever reason, even though it's got a straight boom on it, it worked, seems to work quite a bit better, so. Uh, other than that, we had beer problem for a few weeks there, and I'm glad we put that electric fence up and that seemed, I think they're eating over your place now.
Yeah, they could be.
But they're not making a mess over there, but they were coming.
They'll wait a couple of weeks, they will eat them.
So. Yeah, but I'm glad that worked, Ronnie helped us put that, helped me fix the door and, and help put that fence up and.
They can do, they can do a lot of damage.
Oh, yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, the other thing is obviously this Act one forty-eight business again, I went to a meeting on the sixth, I think some of the things to highlight there is, and I don't know how you guys feel about it, I know it was discussed because they want an ordinance passed that covers the whole town, whoever collects waste in the town, so it's gonna force them to have unit-based pricing, which isn't so bad, but what I am a little bit concerned about is the town, they want the town to take on all this responsibility on the reporting aspect of it, so you know, there was some discussion amongst the people that were there that we might prefer A and R to do this ordinance rather than the towns. Another issue is the educational process, and this is all part of mandates in Act one forty-eight. Going to schools and businesses and basically having an outreach. And the way they're looking at it right now, between all the towns, that we would probably have somebody almost full-time or full-time, part-time dealing with that aspect of the, of the process. So that's another thing that you, you might wanna be thinking about.
Wasn't, wasn't there some discussion at one time about, about consolidating with other towns to do that process?
That's what I'm saying, is it would be, it wouldn't be just panel, it would be eight other towns. And all eight of them would, would basically hire somebody to do this outreach with the schools and businesses and so on and so forth. When I went to Montpelier, I, I expressed the dissatisfaction, number one, that no one was in that room from the educational department in the state of Vermont. 'Cause that's important, the educational process of it. My opinion was that they had more pull with the educational system in the state of Vermont than the individual towns did. Uh, but I don't think they agreed with that, and they handed that responsibility down as it goes now to the individual towns, so. That's a couple of highlights.
I'd like to make one comment on that. Of course, I always like to make a comment, but I can't understand why the state of Vermont wants to pass laws. They want this stuff done, they want us to go, why does the, doesn't the legislature figure these plans out? This shouldn't be left up to eight towns and, and all this other thing, nobody knows where they're going. Uh, and I thoroughly, uh, well, thoroughly disgusted with our lawmakers, as far as that goes. I mean, if you wanna pass something, you wanna clean up the environment or something, well, you got all kinds of people, that's their job. Let them set down whatever they're, they're gonna do and let the people vote on it, if they don't like it, well, they'll vote them out. That, that's my comment.
Okay.
I, I just, I just can't believe that you're gonna take eight towns, you can't get five people here to get along. How you gonna get eight towns to get along to make up some kind of?
I think we're doing pretty darn good.
Quick kick in them.
I, I don't know if I can, if I can necessarily speak for all the legal people in this, but they, you do have some solid waste districts, and I think they like them better than the eight-town thing. But I don't think, uh, that is another consideration, and they're supposed to have some people come and speak on solid waste districts. I don't think the towns down here are gonna want that because you lose control as select boards and, and whatnot. They have a lot of authority and it builds another expensive layer that we're not looking for, that's the impression that is going on right now, so we wanna avoid that if we can.
See, that's, that's a problem too, because, again, you know, federal, state governments mandate this stuff, but there's no funding behind it, it all comes on our backs.
That's.
And that's where I have a problem with it, because if they mandate it, you know, I could point out many examples of that where they mandate stuff, but there's no funding for it, and it falls on the back of us and the taxpayer.
And I'm not gonna argue with you there, Rich, one bit, and, and I don't know as a board if you can express those concerns back through the system and get somewheres with it. 'Cause I certainly agree with you that, you know, it would be.
Maybe even a partial funding or something, throw us a bone here.
Right, I mean, they are, they are putting up some money, grant money for this to be coordinated between the B C R C and whatnot, but any longer-term, uh, money, I don't see it.
You know, if it's matching grant money or grant money to pay, cover it all, most, most of the grants we're seeing is, is that they want us to match in some way.
Well, I'm not exactly, I, I, the B C R C might have done it, but they might have done it in kind though, Nelson. As far as this last money that we got, I mean, Manchester was the host town that applied for that grant money to, to get us where we are right now. The next meeting will be September twenty-fourth from four to six, and Bennington is scheduled at V C R C office right now, but that may change, it may, that office may not be big enough. Uh, we'll go back to part of what Ronnie said, I mean, the SWIFT has, has pretty much worked in the past, so it's, I'm gonna say it could work again. One of the issues that is going on right now is not everyone is showing up at the present time, which makes it a little bit difficult. There's some players missing at some of these meetings. So, there is some challenges. Other than that, um, there is, I think, September, it's up in Burlington anyways, it's the fourteenth or something, and it's nothing that I was gonna go to, it's the national.
Have, have you seen any drop-off because of the, you know, everybody's talking about SWIFT and more and more separation of, of trash and the rest of that, do you see any of that occurring yet, or?
I don't think you got, the big numbers that they're looking for, uh, because that's one of the things I mentioned at one of the meetings, you know, they passed the, the mercury bulb law and, and the paint and, and, uh, e-waste and whatnot, so that, that stuff's getting separated out, but it's, like the e-waste, they said is like less than one percent or one and a half percent. Obviously don't, don't want it in the landfills, but it, the thing that they're relying on to bring the big numbers down is the food waste that's in there, which is gonna be the biggest challenge, and I mean, the other thing is, and I will touch on, is they've got some deadlines here that they would like by June eighteen, twenty fifteen, the solid waste exchanges are required to adopt approval by the SWIFT, that is in conformance with the material management plan. And then they want, they'd like that pre-approval sent to them by December fifteenth, twenty fourteen, in order for them to go over and approve it themselves. That's another thing, I don't know how successful we're gonna be in meeting those, those deadlines.
Are you finding that due to this sort of stuff that they're sending down to you, that you're spending more and more time on paperwork and other, other things than the nor, than you normally would in a week, you end up with?
Well, yeah, when you, when you go through this stuff and, and whatnot, and, and that's, that's also another issue with this whole process, 'cause they went, they used to have manual reporting, you physical make out paperwork and send it in, and they banned that two years ago, something like that, so I've been doing it electronically. And the other issue with doing it electronically, they have a tendency to want more and more and more of a breakdown, so it's, yeah, it gets.
Intensive.
Yeah, it gets more intense all the time, and that's, that's another issue that's been discussed, is are they gonna accept the retract reports that are done now electronically, or is, is there gonna be even more layers, and that goes back to the mandate and, and the expense and nothing there to cover it.
Right.
Well, one of the things that I see is, I guess.
And here's the guy you can talk to that might help you out. He's coming through the door.
Well, well, what I'm seeing is, is, is that we're putting more and more work on the people, you know, we talked about the road crew yesterday and hours and so forth, what they need to get some things done. Here we got a transfer station with the same thing, the, the hours, even though they're not necessarily open hours to the place, we're extending our hours all the time of what we need for manpower. And, you know, and the state's putting these mandates on you, so I guess my concern really is, is, you know, getting a good handle on what that means and impacts town budgets.
Well, and, and from a, a business plan, it's, it's, when, if they. Well, and, and from a, a business plan, it's, it's, when, if they successfully reduce the waste stream by thirty-five percent, you're gonna effectively reduce their income stream by as much or more.
We shouldn't pay as much having it all the way either, right?
Well, you pay, you, you, you're still, you still have costs associated with recyclers. And I, I, I visited with, with, with Trevor Tam on this, uh, few food waste thing, but we didn't, we kicked around how that would be paid for, but that's, and, and if it's like other, like the recyclables, you cannot charge for. And so I'm really not clear on the food waste as to whether you can charge directly for that or not. And if you can't, then somehow you're gonna, the town's gonna have to offset that, absorb it. From what I can see.
But do you see the average homeowner bringing food waste in? I mean, I would think that'd be more of an institutional or commercial.
Well, that's, that's, when they started this program-
I understand that, but I'm saying that was mostly restaurants and-
And that's, and that's where it, it started, it's, they went after the big ones. Eventually by, well, by twenty twenty, it's gonna be banned from the, the landfills, and by twenty seventeen, they want us to provide a means for them. Um, I think this is, I think to me, it's more of a challenge than your other materials, obviously, because they won't go bad and, and smell bad and so on and so forth, your bottles and cans and cardboard and, so this is gonna be more of a challenge. I do know that, uh, that was another thing that was mentioned at one of the meetings, is, is trying to benchmark how many pounds of per se, whatever. We're in a rural area, so a lot of people could compost themselves. And it's interesting, cause I have talked to some people, and a number of them in this rural area don't wanna go there because of the bears. So they, you know, it's, you got a lot of catch-twenty-twos kinda in the, in the system.
Not to mention skunks, raccoons, and every other thing.
Well, if, if we set it up at the transfer station, basically what, what, from what conversation I had with Trevor is they would provide a special container where you put the food waste in, you put some sodas in, and it's got a cover with a charcoal filter on it. So it, it wouldn't be smelling and whatnot from, from what I understand. So if you handle it properly, you shouldn't have the animals in there either, hopefully.
And that'll cook in there.
Well, and, and I mean, he's gonna pull that, we're not gonna make the compost.
I understand, but what you're putting sodas down, he's, odors down.
Yeah, yeah.
When you're talking about this, that means a change in percentage of what people will throw in the, the regular trash. What do you think the percentages are right now of people sorting cans, cardboard, and plastic? When I go over there, I see that still a lot of that going into the garbage side of it.
I mean, yeah, but you get a lot of it that's being sorted, if you, yeah, there's, it's unfortunate you can look in the regular trash and see returnable bottles, a number of those, uh, that are being thrown away. I mean, there's a four H box there where a lot of people bring them in and donate them, but it's in, uh, what's, what's, I think the goal here is, it, it will be cost prohibitive eventually to do those, to ignore recycling. Is what the goal is here for the-
Well, I know in the neighboring state, they have clear bags now. And that's all they let you bring, and they look and see what you're bringing, because they, they're forcing this recycling. The thing I, I see is, 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 you know, it's good that we can promote that and make that work, but today, I just don't see that being pushed as hard, and I think that's what this new statute is about, is trying to make it push a little harder. The problem is, I, I, again, I think there's a burden on the town money-wise to get this moving and so forth.
And I'll, I'll ask, I'll ask, I'll ask Cap something, because that's, because I'm sure he'll have an answer. Okay. What, what do you think we should start to do to increase more recycling? Or how could we? I mean, if that's where we're headed, I think then we should be really, you know, focusing on, you know, what we're gonna be up against, or maybe you already know.
I think that we're, I think that we're headed there, Henry, with this Act one forty-eight, that the part of the process we haven't gotten to yet, I think, is somebody's gonna sit down and say, alright, these are the steps and where we should be, and where are, is each individual town. I think we're in pretty good shape at, at our transfer station. The food, I think the food thing's gonna be the next biggest leap. Now, the, of course, there is the construction debris, and, and I, uh, with Tam setting up down here, it may, maybe it won't be feasible for us to take it, you know, with him being that close.
That's right, that's right.
And that may be the answer for, for some of that stuff, once he gets up and going. Cause I just don't see, uh, it feasible for us to, to acquire other containers, you know, so people can sort that themselves here. Actually, because you're either, if you don't purchase them, then you're gonna pay a lease on them, and with him being so close, I think that's something, we may accept it here and he'll sort it down there, which may be acceptable for the Act one forty-eight. As long as it's being sorted prior, and it's not just going straight to a landfill or, or burn plant or something. So, but I, there again, I would assume if we continue to take it and it's unsorted, it's gonna be more costly for people than if they take it, you know, especially cause they'll have the option of sorting it themselves.
I, I'm just saying that with, uh, just a few years away, I mean, that's what they're talking, I mean, they're not talking, you know, uh-
No, they're not.
No, no, I mean, it, it's short, short term, you know, uh, we should be really, uh, trying to get as much information on it as we possibly can be. I mean, I have no idea what you, you could or couldn't do there, so.
If nothing else, the state is the one that should be promoting the educational piece of this. I mean, uh, you know, uh, where are the flyers, where are the brochures, where are the TV commercials? Where, where, where's, how is, you know, the state, uh, promoting this in order to, for everybody to know about it? Again, is that promotion gonna fall on us, or are we gonna have to put a flyer in the tax bill when we send it out to, to alert people of this? Uh, you know, I think, uh, I think there are, are representatives and our legislators should be asking these questions about how, how, and I don't mean to put you on the spot, Bill, but, uh, you know, I, I really think it's important for, uh, you and surrounding representatives to say, hey, again, here we go, we're mandating this, and it's falling all the way down, trickle down, onto the back of the taxpayer again. What's our role in this besides mandating it? How are we gonna educate the public to this? And, and I think that's an important step to, to get everybody on board, and I, and I, I think, in my belief anyhow, I think that's a state responsibility to, to get this message out there and start sooner than later. But perhaps you could-
Couple, just a couple of things along that line is that, um, the regional planning commissions have a very large role in this. And that is part of the bill, and it's been asked to. And, um, in terms of education, uh, the bill passed, it was a couple of years ago now, several years ago, and I think, uh, you've all been aware of it, I know I've written about it and told you about it along the way and in passing it. I think right here tonight, this is part of the education, uh, you're being aware of it. I think it's also, you know, important to think about, um, if you didn't do this, what would be the financial consequence to the town? And that is a big worry, because you only have two landfills in the state of Vermont, one's in Coventry. Coventry is about as far from Newport as we are from Bennington, and that's a long way to haul. Um, and the other one is in Morteau, and we've been following the news over the last winter or so. They are, uh, closing, and for a variety of reasons, they're pretty slow. So that puts one in the position of, you know, if you kept going the way you're going, you know, the, where you would haul that stuff would become exorbitant. And so I think the rationale isn't here, just cause it's a nice thing to do. The rationale here is that it'd be very expensive to not make some moves to reduce the just-throw-it-away waste stream.
Yeah, and I, and I understand that.
So that's-
But I, I, I still, and I understand the regional aspect of it. But here again, in my small little opinion, the state is mandating this. But what, where's the funding for it? Where, where is the educational piece for this that they could be putting out statewide?
Well, I think that's a good question, and it's a good question to ask, and I, uh, will go back and read the bill and see exactly what was said and who that responsibility was delegated to, and, uh, what resources were put to it. And, um, you know, what the plans are.
Well, I, I think, I think that, uh, I think that really what we're, we're asking is, we have all kinds of mandates, and now we wanna know how. The word is how. That's a simple one, isn't it?
I thought you asked a great question earlier, what could we do on our own?
Yeah, that's right.
Since I think everybody wants the result.
But how, you know, that, that's, you know, we need help to say how, that's, okay, so.
And, uh, I think there are a lot of good ideas, and one is setting goals.
Right.
As you could say, right now, we ship X amount of this and X amount of that, and, you know, our goal is to have more shipped as recycling and less as the other, and, uh, so what are the strategies to actually do that?
Right, now, I think that, I think you're asking the same question.
Strategies go right back to, uh, you know, message, getting it out there like we're doing, saying this, obviously both for financial reasons and-
How can we do it?
What's, what's, what's the percentage that's actually going to landfills today versus burn plants? I think the majority with this end, the state ends up in burn plants, don't they?
No, well, I don't know.
I do believe that some of this, and maybe ours is, is structural, a burn plant in Hudson, New York.
Cause the cogeneration over there.
Yeah, yeah.
I can't swear to that, so.
And I know Pittsfield was screaming for more because it didn't have enough.
But it, none of ours goes to Pittsfield, that's an odd, odd, uh, situation.
So, so I guess what I'm looking at is, and I don't know, it doesn't sound like there's an answer out there yet. I find a lot of times bills get passed because something's occurring upstate, when the downstate really doesn't have that problem. And that's why I'm saying burn plants, and I don't know, maybe we're all going, trucking it up north and going to landfills, I don't know. But the, the real thing is, is those numbers somehow should be looked at and see how we're managing our trash, whether we're putting it in the landfills or whether we're recycling, we recycle quite a bit, actually, and maybe the rest are too, but what part is going where? Cause, you know, the most people are up that end, and they, they scream the loudest, and sometimes we end up paying for something that might not even be necessary.
Well, that's part of, let me go back to when I mentioned that the town's responsibility is to set these, these rates and whatnot. They already know that they're small, cause you, you're bigger haulers like Casella and Tam now, if anybody's using them, they will, they will provide you with single-sort, zero-sort recycling along with the waste pickup. And then when the food thing, if, if there's any small independent, uh, truckers out there, they were exempt prior to this. If you had one ton or smaller, they're no longer exempt. And they may not be able to, if they cannot provide those services, then they will be going out of business, and that's something that these people realize. But, uh-
Here's a, here's a question. Do you think that's a good thing? I don't, I think it's a bad thing. I think it takes the opportunity for other people, with, first we're talking about jobs, matter of.
Right.
So, um, I think that goes back to another thing. What can small businesses, hauler businessmen, uh, do to compete? I mean, I, I think, um, I think everyone needs, uh, business or a job. It's the same thing to me, in my opinion, okay? Whether you got a job or whether you got a business, you have to make money, take care of your family and-
And maybe, maybe it can be done, Henry, the, what the, the talk at the table is-
You can't, you can't, you gotta change.
There's, there's talk at the table, people from different towns that have had, uh, a small-time collector come to their home for years and years. It's just not, it's too, it's gonna be too much for them, they said that they're, they're done, they're gonna be done when this, you know, now. Can it be done? I, you know, if an individual wanted to, can they compete? I don't know.
I mean, uh-
You know.
Probably not, you know, the way it is.
Okay, uh, any other things that we pulled on there?
I guess enough for now. We beat that to death.
I was gonna say, all right, thanks.
Okay.
Okay.
And I'll find out what the education plan is for you and send it to you. And you're more than happy to advocate for, uh, you having whatever you want, you know, more specific you are about what would be very helpful is, uh-
I mean, knowledge, that's all, I, I, public knowledge, I think, is, make sure everybody is ready for this.
Well, no, that's why I did put about four or five-year gradual lead on it, you know, you know, maybe that is not enough. Maybe that is, you know, a doubt.
Cause I haven't seen or heard anything about it other than here, you know, um, you know.
Apologize for not-
No, what I mean here, locally, you-
Yeah, or anyone.
And, and from HAP, or, you know, um, um, nothing in that, like-
Through the B C R C.
Right, uh, newspaper, media, any type of media that, you know, you, you put that in the people's minds and say, hey, we gotta get them bored with us.
Well, and things like that, especially if you wanna change, it's not a one-time deal with the publicity. You've gotta drive that home so people see it.
That's what I mean, this is, this is, this is the way it's gonna be.
Yeah. I, and I, I do know that, based on some things I've seen, it, it is taking up more time for our transfer station supervisor to do these sort of things, which means more hours, which, you know, if we're saving money by doing this, then, then one washes the other. But if it's not, then we're, gotta worry about budget time, that's where I come from. Okay, moving on to Comcast. Uh, we had tabled this back on five eight fourteen, because we were waiting for the person that came in and presented it to answer some questions. And one of them was the proposal to put it at the transfer station, and, uh, their comment came back that they, uh, because of where the, uh, station is in distance to the transfer station, they weren't able to do that, it was too much of a distance. Uh, the other thing, when we talked about having the fire station have a drop, uh, Cat TV now has new equipment and stuff. They don't necessarily need an individual drop, is what this says. You guys are able to broadcast without having separate type drops, like we have here, two separate drops, is that a true statement?
I don't know.
Hey, well, that's what it says on here. It says something about a Q V I D I M to be used in the future, whatever that is. So it's some sort of cue video, um, something. So it must be some sort of device they use now. And, uh, the other thing was-
Uh, before we go too far on that transfer station thing, I'd like a little more clarification from Comcast is on this, because that, that transfer station housing is not that far from the road. It's not halfway up a mountain. It's, I don't know, how many feet would you say, Ronnie, uh?
It's only one pole.
Yeah, I, I mean, what, what is it, do we have to put up the pole?
The pole's there.
We had, we put a pole, we put a pole up.
We put power down into the place.
I think we should push a little harder for a little more information, then it's too far away. I, I, I just think that, uh, we pay enough for cable and everything else. Uh, I, I, I think we deserve a better answer than that as to, uh, maybe what's our portion of it? Um, can we buy the wire? And can we, can we do something like that, say, okay, tell us what to buy, we'll, we'll buy the wire and you put it up? Or, uh, there's gotta be other options, then it's too far away, which it's not.
Yeah, this came on, uh, seven twenty-eight.
So I'd like to push for that a little bit harder.
It's okay with me, uh, do you wanna table this until we get an answer more clear on the?
Well, does, by tabling it, what, does it affect anything else and else, and I, I mean, if there's work-
She has a comment here to do with Comcast has to happen or lose a promotional deal by the twentieth of this month. So the question is, is do we go ahead and do what they're doing here, which handles the phones, uh, and gets that out of the way?
That's what I would suggest we do, and then write letter, write a letter to Comcast stating, we want something more than it's too far away. We wanna know more specifics about this, and what can we do to bring cable and phone or whatever we need into the transfer station to bring it in there?
Okay.
I, I, I think we should move ahead.
So, so our recorder basically is gonna record, well, first, can I have a motion to sign this, it sounds like?
I'll make a motion to sign this so we get it under the wire for the deal.
Okay. In the motion, it basically is approving the contract as presented to us with the stipulation that we will be writing a letter asking for more information about- Asking for more information about the transfer station.
Exactly, yes, and um, maybe even invite a Comcast rep down here to.
Yeah, which, which is what we'll want, but, but basically, the motion is basically to approve it with the understanding that we're gonna write a letter. To the transfer station, that's your motion, so we get it written.
For Comcast, about the transfer station.
Yeah, I just wanna make sure it gets written down correctly, yes.
Could you please copy me on the letter so I can contact Tuck Rainwater and ask him to pay attention to you?
Yep, and Bill, and Will, uh, Bill has requested that he be copied on the letter.
Cause he is the representative, and they all have a lot of their local issues, so we can just make sure that you get a response.
I mean, Bill, you spend.
From the top down rather than the bottom up.
More time down there than any one of us do, and uh, gosh, I don't really think that's a. A huge issue to bring a, a line, a Comcast line into.
I don't know where it ends over there.
What I can tell you is that it, it was a complicated area to outnumber years ago. And that, a number of residents there were very concerned because they, they wouldn't come out with Comcast. They were very hard with them so that the cable would actually be out there on the road, so it is close.
Right.
Most of their decisions are based on density of the number of houses, and there are requirements, I don't understand why. The transfer station doesn't meet the population requirement, which is so many per mile. Uh, since they have it right there, and those are the types of things, you know, I find out from you, I'm actually kinda puzzled. That they're saying that you're too far away.
Because if I'm not mistaken.
Too great a distance.
The town garage has it.
They do.
Yes, they do.
Which is farther from the road.
Farther from the road than the transfer station.
At least three times the distance.
Yeah, so.
So, uh, you know, what I appreciate is just enough facts so that I can say to Tuck Rainwater, who's the Comcast guy in Vermont. You know, who does this, please, uh, look into this and follow for us.
Yeah, great, thank you.
Everybody understand the motion? All those, all those.
Uh, one comment there again, uh, I wanna be assured that these town numbers are gonna be in the phone book. Because I don't think there's any reason that we shouldn't, uh, I know that some people, when they went on to Comcast. Their number is not in the phone book.
I'm one of them.
Right, so I want that, and uh, I mean, I've heard different stories of reasons why. But if it isn't gonna be in the phone book, I think it's a hardship on the people in the town.
That's right, uh, yeah, so uh.
Phone book's too far away.
Make sure, make sure, make sure, Ronnie, make sure that there's a note to Linda that she, she requests that. Because I was told we have to request it to be there.
Yeah, well, I, I, I agree with Ron, I think, you know.
Yeah, why would we have phones if we don't?
Right.
You want your name in there, right, no question.
Okay, okay, any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Yeah, good.
And moving right on, the next thing we have is grant list. Discussion on the extensions and stuff, Barb, why don't you come on up and have a chair? And uh, and you can bring us up to speed where we are and what's happening, and whether we need more extensions, and if so, why and all the rest.
Did you wanna go into executive for this?
If you want to go.
Probably would be appropriate.
You wanna go to executive session?
Yep.
Uh, the board, uh, executive session is to do personnel? Cause if it's just about the grant list, then it's, it's harder for us to do that because of the new rules. But you're gonna go in and talk about personnel, and I can go in.
I don't, I have, I'm not familiar enough with the.
Are we gonna talk about personnel?
Is somebody's name gonna come up, or different offices, um?
It's up to the board, I need a motion from the board to go in for personnel, if that's what we're doing, if we're not gonna go in about personnel. Then we can talk about the grant list on the outside.
Okay.
So what's your pleasure, board?
I'm at a loss here because I don't know what you're about to say.
Basically, I'm just going to update you where we stand, um. So.
And tell us where we are, record wise and stuff.
Yeah, I think we're fine.
I think.
I think, let's, let's, let's hear where we stand.
If we hear something that we, we'll stop you and then we'll, if it's personnel.
Okay, um.
Just find out where we are as far as um, getting the um, grant list. Shipped out of here so that, uh, because we have had a letter here, what, two weeks ago, from, whenever that was.
From the state.
From the state, so.
Yeah, but, yeah, let, let me, so everybody else understands what we're doing. Basically, what we have done is we received a letter from the state that basically told us that they would hold our, our money that would be coming from the state and the federal government. If our grant list did not get in by the fifteenth of this month, uh, what's been holding us up is obtaining some records so we could finish our grant list.
That is true.
And that's, that's the status as we know it as of this moment, so.
That is true, um, I have received copies of the records, okay? Um, they all have to be processed now, okay, it isn't just a matter of getting the records and shipping it off. We still have to go through them being processed, the grievance period, tax rate set.
Any idea how long that's gonna take?
Um, I can only do what I can do.
How many records are we talking?
Approximately six months.
Well, how many records in six months, how many, so we got a stack of records that uh?
That have to be processed, um.
Is it thirty, sixty?
I would say probably sixty to ninety.
Yeah, I did the, the permit things, counted and saw where I did verification, that's pretty about, the number was around sixty, that's why I was wondering what yours was.
Somewhere in there, um, then the grievance notice, the grievance period, um, once everything's processed. They can put it together, prepare the notices, ship them out, do the grievance period, um.
Has any of these been started yet?
The ones I just received.
Oh, the ones.
Everything was set. By June, or, yeah, by June fourth for the, the earlier part of the year.
So everything that you had received, you've.
Earlier, that's all set to go, it's now just what I have just received, um.
And it's about six months worth though?
Yeah, I would say, and you said about sixty, somewhere.
Yeah, well, I did, I counted up the years worth of transfer, you know, verifications and permits, and there's about sixty of those total.
Um, out of those ones that other than, and I'm half processing them because I don't, it isn't completed. Um, but I've got enough to work with.
Can, can you explain what the process is so people understand why these, it will take us the time? I, my understanding is you have to process data, do some manipulations.
Yes, I do, yes, I do, um, everything has to be run through the system to register um, transfers.
Any changes?
That's in addition to just running them through the system, anything that's contiguous with another parcel has to be processed as such. Anything, um. That um, involves changes, corrections, has to be processed as such. Um, current use has to be processed, and processed means going through the computer. Making the changes, setting it up so that people receive notices, um. And um, the initial part with the name changes in the, in the sales I have. I will have to go back in and fill in the rest of the data, um, at a future point, but that's not our concern right now.
Yeah, I was gonna say, for them to do the, the averaging out what our percentage is correct and wrong. You have to provide them with all the sales, right?
Oh, that's a different thing, that's, that's a whole nother, yes, that's, yeah. The, for the C O D and for the C L A, that all has to be done too. Um, so that paperwork all has to be processed, um, sent to the state and. Incorporated, that's all electronic now, so that will have to be incorporated into the electronic database and then addressed.
Are all the listers working on this?
No.
Why?
Because one's going to have a baby, hopefully as we're speaking, and um, the other one is not an active lister.
So you're, so this is all on your back, pretty much.
An active lister?
That is correct.
What, what does that mean?
That means he is not an active lister.
Not participating in the duties at this time.
Okay, you're, uh, you're still have to hear grievances on these things too?
Yep.
So, what do you figure all this, this is the time this is gonna take?
Six months.
No, 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 that's how much work I have to process, no, it will not take.
Yeah, I was gonna say, this isn't the whole grant list.
No, no.
Thankfully.
Yeah, um, no, and it isn't the only thing listers do, um, but it, I have started on them. Once the notices are sent, um, it's either fourteen days or fifteen days before grievance can start. And you have to hear your grievances, hopefully it's not a big grievance year so that it can close sooner, um.
What about appeals, do you have to wait for them too?
The B C A, I am not sure, I have been in contact with the new, the interim director at P V R, and um. He's new, um, he has asked around, he's not quite sure, um. So, I do not know about the B C A.
I was gonna say, in the past, in the past, in the past, there's times when we haven't waited for that, and then we've had to make all these corrections afterwards.
Yep, um, you know, it's, sometimes it's advisable to wait until the final day they can appeal. The B C A, to B C A, and then you have an idea of what's gonna happen. Um, and if nobody's appealing, or you have one or two, you can kinda make a judgment call on that.
Yeah, that, that, I get, and you correct me if I'm wrong, but my understanding is really what we're trying to do is to make sure that the. The amounts that we reprice these various homes for after you've done your thing, is accurate enough that we don't have to make major changes, which will have an impact. On our grant list, which impacts the taxes, we're trying to provide a grant list that is accurate.
Well, we always are, you know.
But, but I mean, that's why you're waiting for the appeals, the, the grievances and so forth, otherwise you could put a number in. And basically, your number, you might feel is correct, but it, as in the past, we've lost some of those where it's had impact.
Mm-hmm, yeah, so you, you tried to cut down on your errors and omissions. Obviously, when you go forward, you wanna have the best product you can have.
Yeah, and I'm just trying to explain, explain why it takes us this time, so we don't wanna set a tax rate and then turn around and find out it's not right.
I, I don't think that would be acceptable.
Is there anybody else in the office that could assist with this, or uh, to expedite it a little bit, or uh?
We can ask the other lister, you know, if he's capable of coming in and assisting. You know, I, I'm not sure if it's a physical or, or what the reason is that he's not here at the moment, but. There, there's a situation in the town that would be nice if we had help.
Really, at this point of time, um. I don't think it's necessary, I really think that by the end of the next week, I'll have, next week, I'll have everything processed.
Cause how many extensions have we asked?
We're done with extensions.
How many have we asked for?
We asked for two, and the second one was the one that we received the response in writing.
Yeah, but that pretty much said you had until the fifteenth, or did it give you thirty days beyond?
It said that the grant list is supposed to be filed by the fifteenth, okay? And after that, if they don't have it, your school monies are not gonna be forthcoming until they do have it, so. Um, that's where we stand.
Is this an exceptional uh, thing, or is this something that we're, okay?
No, this is, doesn't happen.
Statute makes it clear when, when you have to have it by.
I understand that, I mean, I guess, maybe rephrase it. Is there a, a mitigating reason why this happened, uh, does this happen all the time, or? Are we usually on time with this, and this is an outstanding circumstance?
We have never been this late.
Okay.
For filing a grant list, we have been late, but we have never been this late.
So we're getting back to our estimate.
Okay, estimate.
Estimate.
She told us a week, she'll have all the data.
No, what I'm saying, well, it's gotta, gotta have fifteen days of notice for grievance or whatever.
That's right, after I get them.
A week on this other stuff, so just as a, as an estimate, when do you feel this will be done so that? Because uh, I mean, is this gonna affect that, uh, of course, it affects when we set the tax rate.
Already has.
People don't get their tax bill, they got sixty days after they get it to pay taxes, right?
I'm not sure if the sixty days is required by statute, that's, really, you'd need to talk to the treasurer about that.
I think it is, but, cause I mean, I think we ran up against something like that before. And not due to, to that, but uh, we didn't, the grant list wasn't, I mean, not the grant list, but the tax rate and stuff wasn't put out in time. And, and they said, well, you can't send out a tax bill, a long time ago, this wasn't yesterday.
Okay.
Uh, that, you've gotta have so many days, people gotta have in order to pay their taxes, but I, I can check with them about it.
Yeah, I would ask Ellen for.
That's what I was kinda curious about.
And, and to be fair, we wanna be fair to the taxpayers, we don't wanna send a tax bill and tell them they got fifteen days to send it in. I, I think as a board, as a board, we've, we've gotta provide adequate time for people.
That's right.
To get the bill and process it and, and find what they need to find so they can pay their taxes. So, the, the later we set the tax rate, the later the town can expect money, and we should just know that and accept that, because that's what's gonna happen. Uh, the real thing that we need is, uh, as Ronnie keeps saying, is, is the timetable, it sounds like you got.
Well, I mean, some kind of an estimate, you think it's gonna be.
The end of the, end of the next week, and then you're looking at possibly fifteen to twenty days after that, and then you're gonna have some grievances. So you're probably looking at another, so you're talking thirty, thirty, you could be forty-five days away.
I don't think it'd be that long, I really don't, but I understand where, you know, if you're looking at ten days before. This is done processed, another fifteen days, um, and then depending on the workload at grievance.
And how many people grieve, you know, that's, that's the.
And how many inspections need to be done, because, you know, just as you do with B C A doing inspect, inspections, we do the same thing.
Yeah, then it could be done a second time.
And what's the deadline on this?
It was tomorrow.
Fifteenth.
So.
We're late, we didn't meet it.
We didn't.
And so now we're gonna lose federal and state funding?
They're gonna hold it up until this is done, so we wanna get it done as fast as we can, cause you're losing money, interest money. Not that, there's a lot of interest out there today, but, but it's money.
It's serious.
We're losing money.
And we had this happen, I think it was a few years ago, because um, the, our, we was, uh. Thirty days, uh. Uh, we, what was it, December, we paid our taxes?
With the reappraisal, yes.
Am I correct on that?
Yes.
I remember that, it was a month later or some darn thing, I don't recall the dates or the, yeah, okay.
And, and now we're a little later because I remember going into grievance at the beginning of August.
Okay, that could very, very well be, but I remember that story.
September, that lasted forever.
We're stretching, stretching every year.
Can I ask one more question?
Sure.
Is there something we can do in the future, some type of communication, that if we are headed down this path again?
We need, we need to know as quickly as possible.
I guess a lot sooner than.
Well, I, I think.
I don't know, I'm just asking a question.
Again, I think that the key is, is that if we're finding out that we're sixty days late with things getting, we need to know. I don't think we, you know, all these people are elected officials, let's face it, we can know about it, we can try to do something, but be aware.
We should know about it.
We should know.
Is that, we, we should, I mean, if we're running into trouble, maybe we did, maybe we did know.
You did.
We had some letters.
You knew.
Four months ago.
Yes, you did, yes, you did, this is not because.
That's why, that's why I cut myself off, okay?
Yeah.
Okay, alright.
And we knew four months ago, we've been working on this for at least four months.
I don't have, I don't recall the dates or all.
So you're figuring about forty days?
I would say that's a safe number.
Okay.
I would say. I would hope.
Okay, I just wanted something to.
Something to work for, yeah.
I was, wasn't writing anything.
Anything else you can tell us? We'll just ask, keep us informed if some crisis occurs, you know, don't get sick on us. You know, seeing as all, you've got one person doing this, we need to make sure you're there.
All I can say is I will continue doing what I am.
If something happens where you can't, let us know right away.
I always have.
Thank you.
Okay. Rescue squad, on and down, that's the last thing on our agenda, right folks?
Yes.
Oh, made him wait, he was the first man here, yeah, leave it up to Nelson.
That it's gonna have on the town and the rescue squad, I'd like to take it into executive session.
Because of finances and things, okay. Okay, we're gonna talk about the, some costs and what it might cost the town, is what you're telling us? It's gonna negotiate.
Yeah.
Discuss contracts?
Well, I think it's gonna be discussing what the potentials uh, cost could be to the town if the town chooses some.
Trying to help you here.
I know, I, I'm.
Would what you're gonna discuss, if it were known by the public, put the town in a disadvantaged. Position in terms of future agreements, um, that's the basic standard.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Maybe yes.
There you go.
Yeah, I, I think so, yes.
And then I think your other question is, will there be action taken after executive session?
I, I think the board might need to digest what we're hearing before we make a decision.
That's, that's, those are the, I think, I don't know at all, but those are at least two, two pieces before you go to executive session.
And they're getting tighter.
I'm not promising her others.
Yeah.
Very good.
Yeah.
Just trying to make sure you're on the.
Right.
Thank you.
Very good, thank you.
I know, I was.
And, uh, under further actions after this in terms of.
Uh, no actions will be taken after this and we'll adjourn.
No, I'm just wondering if I'll stick.
No, but I should say that anyways for.
Okay, thanks. I'll find out about that education.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you, Bill.
Thank you, Bill.
Okay, so we're gonna get a motion going to executive session?
I'll make a motion when we go into executive session.
And this is to discuss the rescue squad.
The rescue squad's, uh, situation.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Okay, I'm gonna take a few minutes. Uh, we're not gonna make any decisions when we come out, so you can. We're just gonna adjourn when we come out.
I was asking for a second, so I wasn't seconding.